Okay, if I can have your attention please, we'll call the November meeting, regular meeting of the Russellville City Council to order. Welcome, everybody. If you would all please stand, we'll be led in our invocation by Pastor Rita Richardson, who just celebrated her 25th anniversary as pastor of the Central Christian Church. We'll follow that with a pledge to our flag.
Let us pray. Dear wise and loving Lord, we thank you with grateful hearts for your many and abundant blessings we have here in the city of Russellville and the River Valley area. Thank you for loving us and for your boundless and gracious nature. Lord, we are thankful for those who serve this city in various capacities, who willingly work many long hours on behalf of our city and its residents. Bless them and their families. Lord, give them personal peace in their lives and joy in their service. Tonight, Lord, we pray for our mayor, our city council, city attorney, city clerk, department heads, and for all city employees who serve in the various levels of our city government with dedication and a commitment to the people. We also give thanks and pray for the dedication of our law enforcement officers, firefighters, and emergency services workers in our community. Lord bless our city leaders in their work and grant them wisdom and discernment as they make decisions affecting our citizens and this city's future. Guide them daily as they work hard to create an even stronger community for all of our citizens. As our city council members consider items on the agenda tonight, help them to work together to make the best decisions possible for the citizens of Russellville. It is in your most blessed name I pray. Amen.
I plead for allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Madam Plurk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir, if I can find it. Ms. Carruth.
Yes.
Mr. Straight.
Here.
Mr. Sims.
Here.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Mr. Wiley.
Here.
Mr. Tripp.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Mr. Westcott.
Here. All right, we do have a quorum. Counsel, in your package, you should have the minutes from our last series of meetings. Are there questions or comments to be made?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, October 24, special call meeting, first floor conference room. I requested that we have a traffic study done at the corner of Vancouver and West Main. They stated that a letter would be required from the mayor. I formally requested that letter and it's not in the minutes.
Okay, well, I had that in your list of 13 questions to go over in the mayor's report. If you'd like to go ahead and cover that now.
I want it included in the minutes to...I'm pointing out that the minutes need to be corrected.
Oh, so it was not mentioned in the minutes. All right. Everybody want to pencil that in?
What date?
October 24. October 24.
Got it.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion in the second hall in favor of approving the minutes. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Mr. McCoy, that brings us to you.
Thank you, counsel. Financial report for October. General revenue, revenues were $1,119,182 for October. It's 8.8 percent above our year-to-date projections. Tax receipts were $777,760. Franchise fees and permits, $89,000. Our tax revenue comparisons for the city, 2017, we were $3,003,000. 2018, we're $3,005,000. Counties, our receipts from counties, $3,007,000. Our 18 is $4,000,000. An increase over last year of $525,000, or 7.4 percent. Our city and county budget analysis on these tax revenues, budget was $3,968 for the 10 months. We've actually got $3,569,000. The budget for county was $3,791,000. We've actually received $4,540,000. Total expenditures for the general fund are $959,501 for October. That's 1.47 percent above our year-to-date projections. We've exceeded $1,187,480 more than expended. Street fund operations receipts were $157,650, 5.49 percent below our year-to-date projection. Sales tax receipt, $560,595. Road tax, $55,073. Street fund expenditures, operations was $167,350, 27 percent below the projections. Sales tax improvements, $385,716 for drainage and overlay. Capital expenditures were $41,217. Economic development, revenues were $46,427. $44,314 was the new sales tax, $2,113 in interest. Expenditures were $16,376 for Arkansas Valley Alliance and Weir Road. Economic development balances for this year at October. Fund 203 was $1,467,000. Fund 207 was $1,366,000. Fund 2014 is $508,000 as of October. Capital assets, revenues were $106,463, $88,627 new sales tax, $15,487 parks, with $1,738 reimbursement from insurance and $584 in interest. Expenditures were $215,452 to Citicorp Building R&amp;M and Parks. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. McCoy? Right here, a motion to accept the finance report.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, the finance report is approved. Thank you, Mr. McCoy. All right, that'll bring us to the mayor's report. We'll start with a report from Mr. Kevin Massey on the library and some upcoming things that they have going on. Haven't heard from him in a while.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. I just wanted to tell you about some events we've got coming up in the next couple of months at the library. We'd like to invite the community to join us on November the 29th at 4:30 to help decorate our Christmas tree. This is something that we do every year. It's always a lot of fun. We will also be having a cellist, Kristen Smith and her husband, Tim, play live music during that time. On November the 30th, we will be having our monthly movie night at 7:00. This month, we're showing Christopher Robin. Santa Claus will be at the library on December the 13th at 5:00. This is always a well-attended event, and we will be serving refreshments, so if you've got any young kids who'd like to come see Santa, that's the night. For those of you who enjoy fishing, we will be having a fly tying class on November the 19th, which is this coming Monday, at 6:30. And we also offer ACT prep classes for those who are about to take the ACT test. The next classes will be on November 28th and December the 5th. In addition to that, for the first time, we're going to have a GED prep class. That is going to be on December the 14th. We also have our regular programs such as toddler story time and baby rhyme time. Those are on Tuesday mornings. We have a preschool story time on Wednesdays at 10:00 and 4:30. And we have several other things such as teen writers group, adult writers group, mad scientist class, genealogy group, family game night once a month, and we have several other programs for kids and teens as well as adults. And I've got a few flyers here if anyone is interested. Unless there's any questions, that's all I've got.
That it? Thank you, Mr. Massey.
All right, thank you.
All right, got another special presentation. This came up a week or so ago. I thought the counsel would enjoy hearing about this and maybe do, give us an opportunity to promote a worthy cause. Mr. Foye, have you got a presentation for us? And Ms. Pittman, if you want to come up and bring that lovely group you've got with you.
I love this part, it's so good.
How about we just line them up here, and if you would, step over there to the podium where we can get your comments on record.
Don't be nervous.
Go ahead. Cameras on you. Face the camera.
Yeah, face that crow's nest up there. Those are cameras inside.
Y'all have to give a speech.
You have to sing.
Well, first of all, thank you so much for having us tonight to come give this presentation. Really, the journey we're on right now kind of started, in most part, two years ago when we were able to take the choir to Washington, D.C. during the time of President Trump's inauguration. We participated in a festival at that time and did very well. Our choirs, of course, they always do real well. They've got some very talented kids. And so, we performed very well at that festival. We received gold ratings. And through that, we were also invited to come and perform at Carnegie Hall this year. And so, we're following up on that invitation. And so, in March, we will be taking a group of 55 students to Washington, or no, excuse me, to New York City to perform in Carnegie Hall. So, it's going to be a pretty neat experience. My goal as choir director is to give students, as many students as I can, once-in-a-lifetime opportunities to perform, to have once-in-a-lifetime experiences through performance. And this is just another one of those things we're trying to do. So, the details, we're going to be leaving March 19th and traveling by bus all the way to New York City, so it's going to be a long drive. And we'll get there and do a lot of sightseeing. We'll see two shows. We're going to, you know, do all we can while we're there and again, make it a great experience. But, the big event that we'll be there for is, we will be singing as part of a festival and singing with students from all over the country, under the direction of Dr. Andre Thomas, who is the director of choral activities at Florida State University. And he will be conducting all the students that are involved in this festival in several songs for a performance. Another honor that we've received through this is that we applied and were given the honor of being the featured choir for that performance. And so, not only will we get to perform with this large group of students from all across the nation, but we also will be featured that night. Just Russellville Choir will be onstage by itself, singing our own music with our own student accompanist, Avery Wave Adam. So, she's going to get to play on Carnegie Hall. It's kind of cool, kind of her onstage. And she's pretty excited about that. And so, it's really just a great honor that we get to show off as Russellville. Little Russellville's going to be on Carnegie Hall stage. It's going to be pretty great, and we're really excited to do this. Thank you. Ms. Pittman has some stuff she'd like to show you, if that's okay. She has her, what she calls her props, that she's been going around and showing a lot of people, and we've gotten a lot of good support from the community. It is an expensive endeavor, and so, we're trying to raise about $90,000 to be able to take everyone. And so, that's part of the reason we're here, but also, we want to just brag on these kids. And if you, you know, for information on that, I sure could give you all the information you want about how you can give us money. But I also have some cards here.
Some people should just contact you.
They can. I also have some cards here that I can hand out or give out or leave somewhere.
Leave us some extra cards.
I sure will. And it has our, has a link to our GoFundMe page and also some other events that are coming up. We have, coming up in just a few weeks, our Feast of Carols. We've done this for 13 years straight. It's, we serve a meal and we also provide entertainment. And so, it's a ticketed event, and so, we sell tickets for Thursday, excuse me, Friday night and Saturday night, December 7th and 8th. Those will be $20 per night, and so, you get dinner and entertainment for that price. And then, for Sunday afternoon, we do a dessert and soft drinks, and those are, those tickets are $15. So, those you can, if you're interested in something like that, you can contact the music office at the high school, or just call the high school and they can write your call to where that needs to go, or just see one of us, and we can take care of it for you. So, but while we're here, if everybody, if y'all don't mind, we were asked to share a song. Y'all ready for this? Okay. So, this is just a part of the group, obviously, and so, we ran through a song this morning. And so, we'll see how it goes. All right, let me get it.
(Singing) Christmas is here, bringing a cheer, cheering on the whole thing. (Singing) One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere filling the air. All the world raising its sound heart, dancing in the sun. (Singing) Every year, we're singing a song of a cheer. Christmas is here. (Singing) All the world raising its sound heart, dancing in the sun. (Singing) One seems to hear words of a cheer from everywhere filling the air. All the world raising its sound heart, dancing in the sun. (Singing) Every year, we're singing a song of a cheer. Christmas is here. (Singing) All the world raising its sound heart, dancing in the sun.
Hello, I'm Jane Pittman. My granddaughter is part of the choir, and we are on a mission to send these children to Carnegie Hall. A lot of the businesses here have been very responsive. Everywhere I've gone, the banks, cards, AutoPlex, everyone is really pitching in. And part of our coming here tonight is for exposure, to ask, please, help us take these kids to Carnegie Hall. It's a once-in-a-lifetime. I plan to go to see my granddaughter onstage. Please, we need, we have GoFund pages on Facebook, River Valley Now Facebook page, Mr. Matt Foye's Facebook page, and my Facebook page, Jane Pittman. So, we're just asking for help to get our kids there. We have one charter bus that is filled, but we have more children. We're seeking a second mode of transportation. I'm in contact with Cogswell. I haven't heard back. They'll either do monetary or lend us one of their 15 passenger vans. That's really major. We do need a second mode of transportation to get everyone there. But, our choir will be representing our city, Russellville, and Arkansas, and I'm very proud of them. Thank you for having us here.
Thank you all. Fantastic. Good deal. We'll put them out there and see what we can do with them. Thank you, appreciate you coming. Now, when you get up there to Carnegie Hall, tell them you've also performed in City Hall. I'm sure that'll rock their world. Sounded great, thank you. All right, so last week, we were asked for an update on several items. I thought it best that we go through them together and see if we're all on the same table. Item one, updated the carv building. At the end of that, it says tabled last month. The minutes show that that was voted down.
Correct.
If we want to reconsider, Trey, what are we going to need to put that back in motion?
It just needs to go back on the next agenda. It's, it's, once it was voted down, it was taken off.
Right.
So, it needs to be placed either in the regular normal process.
Mr. Mayor, for clarification, it was voted down with a request that the renovation cost and use of the building be provided for us before we would look at that project again.
I thought it was just voted down. There was discussion of tabling it. There was discussion of getting those renovation costs, but when it was voted down, hadn't been pursued because we don't really, I mean, do you want a renovation cost for each different option that's out there for the use? Because right now, we don't have a real plan used for it. The building was offered for sale, and we thought strategically, long-term, it was a good idea. Does the council have a preference for how they want to deal with this?
I am in favor of putting it back on the agenda for next time, but not tonight.
Right. Do you want to make that a motion?
It is a motion.
Well, could you refer that to the Finance and Property Committee? I think that'd be the best place to handle it.
That is my motion, to refer that back to the Finance and Property Committee.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion in a second to refer item one back to the Finance and Property Committee.
Discussion, anything?
Yes, ma'am.
So, are we going to have numbers provided of what renovation costs or what the condition of the building is? That was the whole grievance about the whole thing. We asked for some renovation costs and things like that. We were given nothing.
There are...
But you won't know who's going to rent it though until it's rented. Well, we talked about IT, but we did not put together a plan for what it would cost to put IT in there.
Is that what you want?
That's what we were talking about. That's exactly what the discussion was. We have plans for IT. There were some other ideas kicked around, but there was no information provided as to what those costs for renovation would be. It shouldn't be that difficult. It took about two weeks to get the renovations. Kenneth did a good job of that on the Public Works Building. They were provided to us.
For a specific purpose for that building that we pretty well knew when we were going in. You're talking about multiple options. Which ones do you want a renovation plan for?
One for IT, and what was the other proposals for the building? Because they said IT wouldn't use the whole building.
I do know that at one time, it was kicked around of maybe putting our building maintenance guys in there, but they've got a pretty nice little setup out at the airport that, as far as I know, is working okay, Mr. Fraser. Is that working for them? Do you know of any problems they're having out there? Do they...
They're doing the rent.
So, it's up to the council what options they will consider for in there.
Well, my option would be to renovation costs are getting an IT in there.
Anything else? Mr. Westcott, would you add that to your motion?
No, sir. My motion is to take to the Finance and Property Committee meeting next month, the topic of the purchase of the building. My motion does not include any comments at all about the future use of it.
Then my vote will be the same.
Strictly the purchase of the building.
Okay. So, we will refer that item to the Finance and Property Committee then, and at that point, they can take up what uses or what potential remodeling. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I believe that motion carried, unless you want to call the roll.
There's only one.
Okay. The next item is on retail strategies, whether or not to revisit that. What's the council's pleasure on that one? That's, it wasn't tabled. It's, it's no longer an item of business, but we can also, we can certainly try to revive that discussion.
The project that Retail Strategies brought to town was aggressively attacked, and I feel like that that swayed the opinion of the council at the time. They had up to 10 pending projects on the table that they were looking at, and the aggressiveness of the one project that they, they did bring, plus the data that they brought, they only needed another $35,000 for the continuation of a three, of the three-year, filling of their three-year contract. We have no one else doing that to the level that they were doing it, and I put that in the form of bringing it back to the council.
Okay, so we've got a motion to bring Retail Strategies back for another review. To the Finance and Property Committee, is that where you want to put that or on the main agenda?
It would start with finance, I would think, but it sounds to me like it's going to die for lack of a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody?
Lack of a second, there is.
Going once. Going twice. I believe you're correct, Mr. Sims. I don't hear a second. Three, the step raises, there's a question about that. Those were approved for, starting January 1, 2019. That's why the employees aren't seeing them yet. Item four was the Hudson Harbor Project. That was taken off the agenda by the petitioner, and it would be up to them to, when they feel like, if they want to resubmit it, how they want to resubmit it, it's totally in their court on that. Item five, HR Personnel Committee on the City Engineer Position. As soon as it was approved, we ran ads. We got two applications, so we expanded it, used, I think, Indeed or one of the other online job recruiting services. We still have only two applications. There was a lot of interest early on, a lot of discussion about people that might want to apply. I think Ms. Vaughn has actually had a conversation or an exchange of emails with one, and, and he indicated that he would still want to apply, but he has not done that. I emailed him last week. I have not heard back. I think we've given it as much time as we can, and maybe those two applications will be all we're going to get for that. When she gets back to work on Monday, we will probably work, probably... Probably close the advertising for that position and interview the two candidates we've got and make a selection. I don't know. You can't make people apply, I guess. Six, the traffic flow deal. I'll be happy to write the letter on the West Main and Vancouver deal. They probably have fairly updated it. It just seems to me like it hasn't been that long ago that they had their strips out there doing the counter. The Shallow Road thing, we've talked about doing it. We've had a... The numbers that were mentioned the other night are not exactly what I remember the last time it was brought up. But then we've always... We've also talked about having another study done, look at some other options, Mr. Tripp. I know we've talked about, you know, maybe they would reconsider this, reconsider that. And I don't want to wear out our welcome with our dot. So can I get a motion of some kind, specifically what the council is and is not interested in? Mr. Sims, do you want to put in the Vancouver and West Main motion?
Actually, yes. I would like to have a traffic study done to corner of West Main and Vancouver. That has been an issue that has been brought to my attention over the last two years that has not been addressed. I talked to former City Engineer Kurt Jones about it. He said that that request should be made, whatever. To my knowledge, no counts have been done since the Walmart Neighborhood Market was put in there. It's a very dangerous intersection. And the Shallow Road project has been mentioned to me numerous times. Over that same two-year period, I've been told that it's been approved, but yet we did not take any action on it. So yes, I would put both of those into a form of a motion.
I will second that.
All right. So warrant study, request a warrant study for adding traffic signals. That's what we're looking for, right?
Mayor, I'd like to amend that to add Highway seven and Center Valley Road to that also.
Is it Center Valley or Country Club Road? I ran across some...
Center Valley.
Center Valley?
The Shallow Road one, the traffic study's already been done. The light has been approved. There's no need for a traffic study at that intersection. It's already approved. It's just waiting on funding.
Do you want to refer that to the Finance and Property Committee then and let them decide if they want to do our portion of the funding?
That's really where that should go. That really does not relate to the traffic studies that he's mentioning on Country Club Road and the one on Vancouver. Those are two separate items.
We can do it that way. All right. So you want to refer Shallow Road and Highway seven to Finance and Property?
Yes.
We'll get an updated number for our share of the cost. And then back to the original...
Traffic study, Vancouver and West Main.
You remember where we're at on motions and sub-motions and amendments?
Actually, Mark made an amendment, so it needs to be...
The amendment was not seconded.
Okay. Let's hang on a minute here.
It was not seconded, Randy.
Well, we kind of did a crazy Ivan and went back to discussing Shallow Road and seven being approved. And that's correct. We can put that on the Finance and Property Committee. So now, Mr. Sims, restate your motion, please.
My motion is for a traffic study to be done at the corner of Vancouver and West Main, and that the Finance Committee take up action on the already approved intersection of Shallow Road and Arkansas Seven North.
Ms. Harris, you still willing to second that?
Yes.
All right. So we've got a motion in a second. Mr. Tripp, do you still want to offer an amendment?
Yes, I would like to amend that to add Highway seven and Center Valley Road for a traffic study.
I keep hearing Country Club. That one was done at the same time the Shallow and Highway seven was. And they said it wasn't even close.
That's why it needs to say Center Valley.
So, all right. So Mr. Tripp's motion, that's why Mr. Tripp's motion is Highway seven and Center Valley. So if you want another light in that area, Mr. Tripp's motion is probably the most likely to get somewhere. So I need a motion, I need a second to Mr. Tripp's motion to...
Let me be clear. Is Center Valley the same as Country Club Road? Is that where Center Valley stops and Country Club starts? So we're seeing the same thing. Okay. I'll second Mr. Tripp's motion.
All right.
That's an amendment to the motion, please.
Amendment, whatever. Yes.
So to clarify, right now, we're going to vote on the motion to amend and the second to add a study for Highway seven and Center Valley Road. All right. Everybody understand? Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
We may have to call the roll on that one.
Mr. Tripp?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Not here.
Oh. Mr. Sims?
No.
Mr. Straight?
Yes.
Mr. Westcott?
No.
Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
Ms. Caruth?
No.
Four to three. I'm going to need to do that over again, you guys. Sorry. Let me do that over. Mr. Tripp?
We've got more votes than we've got people.
Mr. Westcott?
No.
Mr. Wiley?
Who? Oh, yes. I didn't hear you.
Ms. Caruth?
No.
Mr.... Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Straight?
Yes.
Mr. Sims?
No.
Four to three.
Four to three.
Four to three in favor. All right. So the amendment to the motion is passed. So now, we'll go back to the original motion as amended. We will request a warrant study for traffic signals at Vancouver and West Main and Highway seven and Center Valley Road. Does everybody agree that that's where we're at? Any other discussion?
What happened to Shallow?
Shallow...
Shallow's put on the Finance and Property Committee.
On the Finance Committee.
The warrant study is still available, and we just need to fund our part.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I don't think we have to call the roll. I think there was one no vote.
It was me.
Okay. We'll get that done tomorrow. Seven, Fire Department Salary Plan. Is it in the budget for this year? It's in the budget for 2019. Hopefully, everybody saw their emails from yesterday, Mr. McCoy, setting the schedule for budget review meetings. Item eight, the Highway three twenty-six deal, that was tabled last month. It is... Should be on your old business for tonight. A report from the Short Term Rental Committee. Mr. Westcott, what can you share with us?
No report at this time. Everything is still in the works, but it's a time-consuming process to be able to be fair for all of the citizens involved. We are actively working on that, but no report tonight.
Good. Ten, discussion of the lack of permits and fees being collected in recent years by code enforcement and community development. Specifically, why do we have businesses that have not had permits renewed for as far back as 2006? Mr. Holstein's still here. Come in and give us an explanation on all that.
We did suffer some issues as far as our spreadsheets, as far as trying to keep up. We have... First of all, we have fourteen hundred businesses approximately in the city of Russellville and it grows every year. In any given year, we have somewhere in the area of fifty to sixty brand-new businesses come aboard. One of the things that we failed in, I feel like, is in our spreadsheets, if a business did not renew, let's say in 2016, and they went delinquent and it wasn't caught, it was pulled from the list. Well, some of those businesses were still... They were still there. And quite frankly, this year alone, we called on a hundred businesses, a hundred businesses, a hundred phone calls, that business went out of business. It wasn't even in business anymore. They don't call us and tell us that they've quit their businesses. We have to research. We have to be investigators, if you will. We also have businesses in the city of Russellville that are painters, are roofers, people who never lightened the door on us. And we would have to have a man twenty-four-seven out there investigating to try to catch every business that was delinquent or just didn't ever come in and pay their permits. We have... I feel like that we have a lot... We're under construction right now, trying to design a better method of trying to keep track of these businesses. But I will say this. You can hire a person at thirty thousand a year to gather up five thousand dollars of delinquent permits, and that's fine if the council so wishes. I just want to make sure that they understand that it's a backward effect. It's, you know, we may be able to revenue another five grand, but we're going to spend thirty thousand dollars on an employee trying to do that. So it's the council's wish, we sure hire another man.
Mr. Holstein, one employee temporarily assigned to your department collected over sixteen thousand since August of 2018.
Sixteen thousand?
Yes, according to your assistant, Melissa.
Well, I don't have that... I don't have that number in front of me.
Well, I do.
You have it in front of you.
I don't have it in front of me. It's on my iPad, but it was over sixteen thousand dollars.
That was by word, or was that a report that she actually produced?
It's documented on letterhead.
Okay. A report that she produced and gave you?
Yes.
Again, there's a lot of busy work there. If, in fact, the council wishes to, for us to hire someone to man the phone eight hours a day, that's what it's going to take to be able to do what you're talking about doing. And yes, by the way, this gentleman was... He was... He helped us tremendously, but that's all he did. Every minute of the day that he was... He's been working for me, has been on the phone trying to recover businesses that... And quite frankly, he went to the Chamber of Commerce and got their list. And about fifty percent of what he collected was people thinking when they paid their chambers dues, they were paying city business license. So there was a lot of issues there that unfolded as he investigated and done this work. I'm not saying Mr. Collins didn't do a good job while he was working for me. I'm just saying that's all he done. He was... That was a busy, busy, busy job.
I don't see any reason to bring the person... Just make this personal, but the facts are...
I'm not making it personal.
The facts are that sixteen thousand is a far cry more than five thousand. And there were two hundred and ninety-nine delinquent permits. When he took that position, cleared them out in a matter of weeks, was given an additional three hundred and seventy-four permits that were delinquent back to 2015. And in his investigation, found businesses that had been in business and operating since 2006 that were never permitted. And one restaurant in this town...
That never got permitted. Exactly.
That had never been permitted.
Yeah.
But had been operating and...
He become an investigator. Yes, you're right.
It sounds like you do need more help over there.
If it be council's wish...
But yet, my understanding...
If it be council's wish, I will hire...
But my understanding, we'll cover that in the budgets session. But my understanding, you have not requested a new position in your...
No, I have not.
2019 budget.
I have not.
Thank you.
All right. Item eleven, a status report on outstanding warrants and activity report from police department over the last several months. Chief still here?
Yeah. He did the podium, Mayor.
Chief?
I don't know what you want.
A status report of outstanding warrants. I guess, give us an update on the situation, why there are warrants that don't get collected and your efforts to do that. I think you did some research earlier this week on it.
Is this question for Mr. Sims?
Yes.
Mr. Sims? Is this directed to me? It's not directed to you, sir. It said Chief Humphrey on the list. Exactly. The question is, I have a business in town that approached me almost eighteen months ago about outstanding warrants. And when I followed up on it, I found out that we had over nineteen hundred outstanding warrants in this town. I understand the system. Right. And I learned a lot about that process. Right. I also understand that we don't have any beds available out at Pope County Detention. Right. Although, there was conversation about visiting with Sheriff Shane Jones about some type of rotational process, given something that we could correct that. But do we or do we not have people that are stopped up to five times, giving warrants and then let go because we don't have a place to take them? That's true. And I spoke with the sheriff earlier this week, had lunch with him. And as he told me, I have the keys to the jail, and I can't put people in jail on warrants. We looked at the number of warrants issued to the county versus what's issued to the city. It's similar, that they have a few less than us. The number of warrants issued per year ranged between three thousand and about thirty-five hundred. We're able to serve consistently for the last nine years, about eighty-seven to ninety-two percent of those. And I'm glad you used this for example, because I looked this back up, too. The gentleman that you inquired about when you first became or first were on the city council, and you asked about that. It was a hot check warrant written to a local clerk, and we had reason to believe that he might live in Hot Springs. I think that's right. I looked at the status of him. We did serve that warrant. And he started making his thirty-dollar-a-month payments again. He's quit again. We have a new warrant on him for failure to pay, or failure to comply. Reoccurring, reoccurring, reoccurring. These people, they know the system. They know that we're going to serve and release them. They know they're not going to go to jail. The sheriff told me, or the deputy chief told me two days ago at lunch, when I was with the two of them. He said, "We play games with them. We say we're going to keep them in jail. They go over there and they sit for a few hours, but at the end of the day, they go home." And as he told me, he said, "I have to let out the least serious to put in the more serious. The least violent to put in the more violent." We're consistent with other police departments around the nation, especially around Arkansas, on the number of warrants we serve. We don't get money from these people anymore. We're not able to lock them up. And we collect... I mean, every month, you get a report from me that shows the number of warrants received, the number served, and the amount of collections that we get. We've got, like you said, we've got people that have had failure to comply warrants as much as ten times. Because they, you know, they get arrested, or they don't get arrested, they get served a warrant, and they get a court date. They go to court, and the judge says, "You better start paying those again." And they tack on some more fines. I had a nephew that had about two thousand dollars that he was paying the city. And every time that you fail to pay your fines, they tack more on and more on and more on. The twenty-five-dollar warrant service fee that was passed by the legislature several years ago, that's the very last thing that's collected. City Attorney May... Captain Ewing, restitution is collected last. Court fees, the state gets their money first. The court gets their money. Anyone due restitution gets that last, and then the city gets the twenty-five-dollar warrant service. They, anyone due restitution gets that last, and then the city gets the twenty-five dollar warrant service fee, actually the very last thing. So, it's not a money-making thing. A lot of the warrants, a lot of the people that don't reply to the letter that we send, that don't reply to the knock on the door, it's by happenstance that they get stopped on a traffic stop, and that's where we serve the warrant on. So, it's not really changed in the eighteen months since your first inquiry. I mean, it's, it's pretty consistent.
So basically what you've told us, the system's broke.
It's been broke for a number of years.
Yeah.
I mean, I used to be the warrants officer at the police department, and I used to work weekends, and I used to work up till ten o'clock at night, serving warrants. And I used to put people in jail, a lot of people in jail. We don't use that person like that now because they don't go to- It cost us forty dollar, forty dollars just to walk in the, forty-two dollars to walk them in the door. Anybody that we take over-
Would more help, help?
Sir?
If you had two warrants officers, would it help?
Not really.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate your response.
Appreciate it.
Chief, while you're up there, you wanna go ahead and skip down and do number twelve? That says for you and Bill Clark, complaints made of streets being blocked in residential areas by illegal parking and/or too many vehicles. Tell us-
It does come up.
Yes, sir. I'm gonna tell my age. I've been a police officer for thirty years and a chief for six years. Parking problems in the city of Russville is nothing new, and it's something that's not real, really changed much in thirty years. There's, there's, there's two, uh, parking problems that's come up recently that, that two, uh, you and Mr. Tripp have inquired about. And, uh, I look at these, and, and, and there's nothing different from these parking problems than any other parking problem that we've got in our city. And I was at, you didn't have, Mr. Westcott, you did not have a report to make on the, uh, short-term rental, but I was at that committee meeting the other night as an audience member, listening to what y'all were talking about. Because a lot of our issues in the city are interconnected. There's nothing that's just isolate like drainage. You know, it's all connected, so, to many things. So, uh, one of the things that I heard you guys talking about, in addition to the rental prob- problem, was parking. And what did you say about that?
What, what a wonderful problem to have. We, we ask for economic growth. We recognize that economic growth comes from more people moving into our area, and following more people moving into our area comes more retail. So, what a fabulous problem to have.
We're not talking about downtown parking.
Just a second, just a second. If I were to go back in time when my father and mother were younger, and I was a young child, my parents had eight children. At that time, my dad was the only one that drove. Parking a car in our neighborhood was not a big deal because there was one vehicle in our family. You fast forward that fifty years, if my wife and I had eight children, and those eight children were teenagers, instantly you would have ten people driving vehicles parked at my home. My question is, for anybody who can answer it, is where would you have me park? Would you like me to park in the lawn? Would you like me to park on the street? My driveway can only handle four cars comfortably. If my family, if I had eight children and they all had vehicles, we had ten vehicles, where in the world would you like me to park?
Well, I would like to add, follow up with that then, if, because the situation we're all referring to here is a complaint on Preston Drive or Preston Circle. A lady goes and picks up her granddaughter at her son's house at six-thirty in the morning, on a Monday morning, so it's not a social event going on on a Friday or Saturday night, which we all understand those issues. And my, without looking at my notes, there were like three vehicles on the driveway. There were, both sides of the street had three and four vehicles, some of which were parked the wrong direction, which I know we can address. The problem was that a fire truck could not get through to either one of about four houses there unless they just pushed those cars out of the way. Chief Slohmack can give us whether they have the authority to do that or not, I would hope you do. But at the same time, who's liable? If one of those houses catches the fire, our, our fire and police or whoever cannot, first responders cannot respond. If, if we've got that many vehicles, do we not have ordinances preventing so many vehicles from being parked on streets or in front of, on the curb or in the lawn, as you mentioned, or on the- It, it's just an obvious problem that needs to be addressed. It's not gonna go away, especially when you've got neighborhoods like Marina Village where you have a lot of rental properties. And we're getting another rental property neighborhood in the old Arbor site.
I agree with you, Mr. Sims, on this. Marina Village, I used to live in a- Ms. Kinnamore, do you still live in that area?
No, sir.
Okay, you moved. But, but you remember this. I mean, you remember the parking problems in, in that neighborhood. I used to live in a neighborhood that was even more compact than this and had more cars. It drove me crazy as a police officer to see the parking out in the streets like that. And, uh, yes, there are times that they park on both sides of the street. And it makes it very tight. But I have asked the fire chief and the fire marshal if we've ever had an incident where we couldn't get to a fire call or where a fire truck could not get through the road, or get down the road. Uh, they said no. But, and yes, they can, I mean, a fire truck could push a little bitty car, I mean, a small car off the road quite easily. But, the problem that we have is, uh, we don't have city legislation. We don't have a city regulation ordinance that, that regulates that. The, the state statutes that regulate parking, there's two in here. In one of those, there's fifteen examples of where you cannot park. And none of them have anything to do with the parking problem that we have in Marina Village. The problem with the police department is, we can't write tickets and tow vehicles when we have no authority. Uh, about two years ago, Kurt Jones brought this ordinance, not officially in front of you, but he did talk individually to some of you about a comprehensive parking ordinance for the city. I was told that it was too complicated, it was too regulatory, it was, uh, it gave the police too much authority to issue tickets and tow vehicles, and that it should not, that the parking problem's not all over the city, in every neighborhood, isolated cases. So, this ordinance just never got anywhere. I'm not saying that this ordinance should or should not be passed. And the police department was working with Mr. Jones on this before he left. And there are some good things in this ordinance that would give fire, police, code enforcement, authority to take care of some of this that we do not have now. It is, I think, more of a permanent solution than spot enforcement that we've been asked to do now. I would like to say that on the Tanya Circle, uh, we have one call for service that was called into nine-one-one, and that's how the police department operates. I have said this multiple times, if you have a problem in your neighborhood, in your house, or you see something that you think is a problem, please call the police department, I mean, nine-one-one. That is the quickest way to get a response. We had a call on, uh, September, August twentieth. We had a call on Tanya Circle of multiple cars on both sides of the street blocking the traffic way, or the roadway. A police officer responded. They were having a party. It was a rent house. And they said, "Get the cars off the road, get the roadway cleared up," and they moved the cars. And we've not had another call there to the dispatch center. We have the other one that was brought in, uh, here's a picture that I took, uh, in the last few days. There's a couple of things going on there that I think is interesting. You've got cars parked on both sides of the road. And Mr. Sims, you're absolutely right. On some days, you can go over there and there's multiple cars, and some of them are parked, what we call, um, what's it called?
Against traffic.
Facing the wrong way.
Against traffic.
Against the flow of traffic.
No, there's a term, there's an official police term for that. But yes, they're parked on the wrong side. So, but I drove through there, that's my car, by the way. I drove through there, and they are parked on both sides of the road. And if you look in the, the foreground of the, uh, the very back of the picture, there's a truck with a trailer parked. Now, the trailer is not connected to the truck, and the trailer is facing the opposite direction of the truck. Is that a violation? None that we can find in the statute book. That's a contractor doing work at one of the houses. But it is a big box trailer that's hard to see around. I did talk to the, I did talk to the contractor, and first thing when I walked up there, "Am I in trouble?" I said, "No, sir." He says, "Is there an ordinance that I can't park my trailer here? Because I, in some places I've been, I've not been allowed to park in the street." I said, "You're fine." I said, "But it is something that's gonna be discussed at the next council meeting." So, he, being a contractor working in multiple cities, he knew that some cities have that ordinance, some don't. Here, here is the one on Randall. I'm, not Randall, but, uh, yes, Randall, Circle, off of Waterworks. This is the one that I guess we've had the most people, or that I've had the most notification of, about this parking. Is this parking legal? Is this parking not legal? This parking is legal. Is it blocking the roadway in a unsafe manner where a school bus can't get down there, or it's unsafe? Because that's the complaint that I received. There's a, a view from a different angle. That's also the house that has the cars that's parked in front of it. I, I, I don't know if it's a frat house, I don't know. I believe it's a rental house, and there's a lot of college kids there. Sometimes there are six and seven cars parked down that road. Again, they're parked legally. Where is? Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. I wanna show you a quick video. I'm gonna, if I can. Uh-oh.
Help us. Help me, help me.
Okay, I need to fast forward it. Okay, here's a trash truck coming up this road. And there's a car going down, and the, the trash truck becomes very interesting in a minute. So, what, what I'm, what I'm demonstrating is, there's enough room for a trash truck to get up that road. Though, these cars are not blocking the road. And what we have is, we have one person that is making the complaints on this. We, we don't have na- a neighborhood outcry that these cars are blocking the road where people can't get home or- And one complaint is enough for us to take action. Here's the school bus picking up kids. When the school bus drops off the kids, it also goes in the same direction. Now here's where it gets interesting. If we're gonna have a problem, I would think this is gonna be the problem. Because we have two big commercial vehicles on this roadway. So, I talked to the school district, I talked to the supervisor over the bus drivers and asked if there's been any complaints about the school bus up here. He said, "No." I said, "What about in other areas of the, the city?" Again, he said, "No." And we talked about neighborhoods and cars parked where the school bus has to go around vehicles. And he, his quote-unquote, he goes, "We have to go around vehicles." He did not hit the police car. He said, "We have to go," here's another car coming up passing his parked cars. He said, "We have to go around vehicles on almost every street, every street that's in a neighborhood." They're parked in neighborhoods everywhere. He goes, "That's just what we do." And when the school district has concerns about safety with the school buses, they call us. You might see us following school buses sometimes, and we stop people that go around the flashing red lights, et cetera. So, as, as I said, at the, when the school bus drops off the kids, it's still the same route, on the same side of the road. So, it doesn't, I don't see a hazard here. Uh, I've been out here four or five times. Marina Village, I've been out there more times than I can count looking for this traffic problem. Some days there are cars parked on both sides, some days there's, there's not. Here's ano- here's another parking problem we had downtown. This was very much a hazard because cars were coming over the overpass going eastbound, westbound, and the, the big four-door trucks that were parked out there, we had three or four of those hit. Actually, we had one with a canoe sticking out of the back that was hit. And we didn't know what to do. So we had the mayor, we had me, we had the street department supervisor, we had the, uh, city engineer, we had the city attorney. We were all working on a solution, or at least something to do to, to, to stop this from happening downtown. And it took a few months to scratch our heads and come up with something. I think, Mr. Tripp, I even talked to you about this. About, did I talk to you about, like, cutting the sidewalk? And we talked about making, cutting the sidewalk in and, and making the parking places longer. And the reason I talked to Mr. Tripp about that is because we, we talk a lot, and it's businesses that would be affected if we start cutting up the sidewalk. So, do we wanna do that? And we all scratched our heads to try to figure out what to do here. So we put up these signs that say, "No parking," "You'll be towed," and we wrote a lot of tickets and towed a few vehicles, not a lot, but a few. And you can go down there now, right now, it's pretty busy. You're not gonna see the problem that we used to have. I'll walk back to the Tan- uh, to the Randall Circle. We've had three calls to the dispatch center about this parking. Twice, officer responded and saw what was reflected in the photograph, that is, the cars legally parked. The officer that did that is the officer, that's the security officer here tonight. So, you, you're getting firsthand of what the police did. I think, Mr. Tripp, I talked to you about it and said, I think I did. And I said, "You asked me what we had done," and I said, "We'd responded twice." I said, "But we did not talk to the complainant, and that, that's what we should have done, is talked to the person." Because he drove by, saw the cars were, cars were legally parked, and he kept going. So, we got another call from the same complainant. A couple of days later, a supervisor was told to call, and he called him, and he talked about what the problem was. He said, "I have a duly truck. Sometimes they're parked, and it's hard for me to get around." And that was about the end of the conversation, and we've not had any calls since, since the supervisor talked to me. I am open for suggestions, what to do with parking. I think it's better if it could be in an ordinance of some sort. Uh, the city does have the authority to put up street signs. If we put up a street sign, are we gonna put a street sign up in every neighborhood in the city? Mr. Wiley, I think you told me- Mr. Wiley, I think you told me of some street signs that were put up at the request of who?
City Council.
City Council. Where we had parking on one side of the roadway. I think that's over on, uh, probably Twenty-first Street in Timberwood Edition. And that's where I used to live, where we had a parking problem.
And also down the street in that other subdivision from the high school.
So, I think collectively, all of us working together, we can, we can, but we can't, we can't just go and ta- tell people to get their car out of the road and tow it and whatever unless it's, it's the true safety hazard. And the statute, Judge Born was our city attorney before he was judge. So, he, you know, I've gone to him for guidance in this, not on this particular one, but others. And he's always said, "What does the statute say?" And that's what we try to go by. I mean, so, Mr. Sims, I mean, I, have you got suggestions for me on this? 'Cause, I mean, we did address this.
I really appreciate the report you gave, but all I wanted was a follow-up on the one house at Preston. And I think I got that follow-up about thirty minutes ago.
Well, i- i- as you said, it's, it's not going away. It's gonna keep, and I'm, I'd like some help for the future.
I think you need it.
This doesn't have anything to do with, uh, this, but I wanna show you another slide.
Can I ask you a question right quick?
Yes.
When you fine these people, when you write them a ticket for doing this, what's the fine? Do you know? What happens?
Trey, do you know what?
Do you have any idea when they go to court, what happens?
It's just a parking ticket.
It's only gonna be a hundred and forty dollars.
I'm gonna tell you on this situation, like I've found out on homes around town that look like junkyards. Absolutely. Look like junkyards. They go to court, they get fined, okay? Lot of them just pay the fine, go on, okay? If the fine were big enough to hurt, really hurt, they might clean up their yard. If the fine were big enough to really hurt them, they might find a place to park their car or be more careful about where they put it. That's all I, just wanted to add that to you.
This is a delivery.
Because I'm telling you, I have gone around places in this town and looked at places that has had, it looks like a junkyard. Looks like an absolute junkyard. And I think that's exactly what happens. They go to court, they get a fine, nothing happens, or they pay it and go on or whatever because it doesn't disappear.
Right. This is another complaint we get, is when we have deliveries downtown. So, anyone that were to go around that truck would have to go across the double yellow line into oncoming traffic. I'm not saying tonight we make a decision on this, but, and it's also, you can't park in any of the parallel parking to the right. I understand commerce, I understand we have businesses, uh, but it is another thing, like, why don't y'all do something? Why don't y'all do something about that UPS truck out on Main Street that blocks it every day? We get a lot of complaints for parking.
Oh, give me a break, okay? Now, anybody that's gonna get that petty, you have other things that's more serious?
Yes, we do.
Well, actually, if that's the intersection, I think it is, I had a complaint that that truck was backing up the traffic at the light all the way in front of...
Phil, it won't take five minutes. I mean, these people are in a hurry.
Well, actually, if you'll come to my office and see what's delivered at Peters Furniture, it does take more than five minutes.
Well, Peters was there first.
I can't help how petty the complaints are, but we get them, so, and we do have to look into them.
I've actually been blocked in for an hour from a truck just like that, being parallel parked.
Wow.
I've got one more slide I wanna show. This might interest, uh, a couple of you. The Red Square is a multi-family dwelling. It's a story-and-a-half house. It has about four different residents in it. It is mostly occupied by people that have been convicted of various felony crimes, absconders. And if you look, it's catty-cornered from the lot of what's now First Baptist Parking. We made a felony traffic stop the other night, which led to, well, in the daytime, which led to information about this house. And we found out that we had multiple felons living in it, and we had two that were absconding that were on parole. And there's another look at the house. And that's what we got. The, the car that we stopped leaving the house, we did a search warrant of the house, uh, methamphetamine and they're, they're, they're making pills. That gun to the top right is a modified AK, or a modified AR-15. And then there's the pistol in the middle, and the information we had was the person who owned this loved to carry this in their car. The night before, we stopped this car, but the officer did not know he had these guns and had no reason to search the car because the files were temporarily down. When we ran his name, he came back as not wanted, and he was wanted, uh, for felon, for a probation violation. So, we made two arrests. This has led us to more. And, uh, I just thought it was quite interesting that it's that close to church and other, uh, public housing. And these are the things that we deal with that, you're talking about having manpower, Mr. Sims. I, if you remember the report from Mr. Smith, or Captain Smith, last month about, uh, what we're trying to do, uh, on our criminal patrol, um, we're trying to get more of these types of people off the road and out of the houses and out of Russellville.
He actually suggested K-9. Did you put that in the budget?
Yeah, it's not in the budget because I, that's a pretty big-ticketed item, and, uh, it's worthy of discussion, more than just arbitrarily putting a number in.
Chief, would you care to go back a slide?
Yes, sir.
Is that, is that house next door vacant? Is that, is that a white house you can barely see?
Yes, it's vacant. It's been vacant for a while.
And is the end of that, when was this picture taken of?
Uh, it's Googled. That's, that's a Google map. That's not one of our pictures.
So, where you're saying was, was in the two-story portion of it, right?
Yes.
'Cause today, the front portion of that does not look like it's inhabited whatsoever. It looks like it's had some work done on it.
We kicked two doors.
I called this address into code enforcement, uh, about two months ago, and that's why I, I had to make sure that it was that address. Because I had a complaint, in door knocking during campaign season, I had a complaint from a neighbor about those two structures. And one of them looked like, the one on the front looked like it had been posted. And I think Melissa said it was in, in, in the process, but kinda midstream. Because none of the three look, looks like they would meet our code.
Any other questions for me?
Thank you, Chief.
This is probably the last time I'll be at the microphone this year, I hope. So, while I'm here, I wanna thank Mr. Wiley for being my liaison for the last couple of years. I think you've truly supported us, and I appreciate it. Ms. Harris? I appreciate what you've done for us. I appreciate the many calls that you've made. In the times that law enforcement was going through hard times across the nation, you always called us and supported us. You called us and you cried when officers in Dallas got shot. And that meant a lot to our people, and I, I greatly appreciate that.
I appreciate you.
Mr. Sims? We've had it back and forth a little bit, but that's okay. And I appreciate what you've done for us also. The pay raise that we got last time was more than I wanted, and you sold it to the council, and they got more money in their pocket, and they appreciate that. Every one of you that, that are up here are serving the community in the capacity that you do, and every one of you, without exception, have supported the police department. I've not gotten everything I've asked for, but we've not, you've not withheld anything to, to hinder our job. And you've given, you've given us support so many times, and our officers know that, and I greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Chief, that was my pleasure.
Okay, item eleven, who is responsible for bringing table items back before the city council? So, we can avoid such things as the convention center offer letter debacle. Uh, basically, everybody on this side of the table, anybody and everybody has that ability to do so. Uh, with that said, I'm not sure if there's another place that we're gonna be able to inject tonight's, this afternoon's special meeting. Okay, I see on finance, we've got a discussion on the convention center at eight, at item eight. We'll just wait and do it there. Item thirteen, Mr. Heagle's renderings. He took a knotted plow line to some people he was waiting on. I got those about an hour or so before the meeting started, but as you know, we were over across town. Mr. Sims, I'll send those to you tomorrow, and hopefully, your committee can get together pretty quick. I don't know, I haven't seen them. I don't know how detailed.
It'd have to be mighty quick.
I don't know. Well, I'm, I'm thinking that for a couple of those pieces of property down there, we may need to do a special call meeting or something, but I'll get those to you, uh, tomorrow, and hopefully, there's enough detail that we can at least make the presentation that you wanted to make.
Thank you.
All right, that's enough for Mayor's report. Finance Committee, had a curveball thrown here at the last minute. Mr. Westcott is gonna stand in for Chairman Brown, who's traveling today. So, Mr. Westcott, y'all got any business for us?
We've got just a few things. Uh, Mayor, from the Finance Committee agenda dated November sixth, uh, we've brought forward the following items. Number one, consideration of, for approval of the 2017 Audit Report from Arkansas Legislative Joint Auditing Committee. Present that in the form of a motion.
Counsel, you heard the committee's motion. Is any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item one is approved.
Number two is an appropriation from the Fire Department, the amount of twenty thousand two hundred dollars for repair and maintenance on a Jeep Type VI Wildland vehicle. And we present that in the form of a motion.
Counsel, you heard the committee's motion. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item two is approved.
Numbers three and four are combined together. Consideration of a resolution accepting the bid for replacement of the Preston Drive Culvert by Bowden Specialties in the amount of fifty-five thousand eight seventy-one twenty. And we present that in the form of a motion.
Mr. Chair, is your motion for three and four combined?
Correct.
Counsel, you heard the committee's motion for three and four. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three and four are approved.
The next one is a consideration of a resolution accepting the bid for taxiway repair and maintenance for a ninety-ten grant. Uh, I wanna couple that with numbers, what I have is number seven, the appropriation for that, the amount of one fifty-two, nine ninety-one, twenty-five.
Number six.
I think it's, yeah, it's been corrected on some people's agendas.
Five and six.
It is five and six, and, but your amount is right, one fifty-two, nine ninety-one.
We present that in the form of a motion.
All right, Counsel, you heard the committee's motion. This is five and six on the most recent agenda. Any questions on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Five and six are approved.
Okay. Number seven, consideration of a resolution to apply and accept a ninety-ten FAA grant for runway rehabilitation, lighting, construction, and installation at the Russellville Airport. We present that in the form of a motion.
Counsel, you heard the motion. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item seven is approved.
I'd like to move on to number nine real quick, come back to number eight if we choose to. On number nine, consider raise, consideration of a resolution accepting the bid for lawn care and maintenance at the Oakland Cemetery for 2019 from All Seasons Lawn Care. And that is, do we have the appropriation for that, or is that gonna just be included?
No, it's gonna be, it's gonna be in the budget.
Okay. And we present that in the form of a motion.
All right, Counsel, you heard the motion. Does everybody understand what we're saying and why there's not an appropriation?
Yes, but I have a question.
Okay, Mr. Tripp?
Do you remember what the bid was?
Thirty-one thousand two hundred.
Was that the low bid?
Yes. Well, no, there was another bid, but he, he wasn't qualified.
So, it was the lowest qualified bid?
Yes. There was two bids.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item nine is approved.
Did you wanna do the convention center thing now, or?
Just to, uh, finish up the discussion, and let's keep it live. We, there was some talk, uh, I know, on this end of the counter when we got here about setting a date, December seventh, uh, six P.M. for both parties, that if they're interested to do a formal presentation, um, I'd say six o'clock for one and seven o'clock for the other. If that's what, how the council wants to handle it, that was just some of the discussion. So, I'd, I'd like to have a motion to that if we can.
I'd like a motion to that effect.
Second.
Okay, motion, Mr. Wiley, and a second, Mr. Westcott. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We'll get that set up.
Okay. And then this evening, uh, on your paperwork, number one was tabled, uh, last week, so we'll start with number two. Appropriation, uh, for the city attorney for printing and litigation expense in the amount of eighty-five hundred. And we present that in the form of a motion.
Counsel, you heard the committee's motion. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item two, tonight's agenda is approved.
Number three is a line item transfer for animal, animal control, the amount of three thousand dollars, and we present that in the form of a motion.
You heard the committee's motion. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item three is approved.
We got overtime, too.
Uh, this is a transfer. It's from dog expense into overtime.
Oh, okay.
Number four is a consideration for the Finance Department to destroy old audited accounts payable records for the years 2007 through 2010.
And I have got the attorney to write a resolution in that effect.
And we present that in the form of a motion.
All right, Counsel, you heard the motion. Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item four is approved.
Number five is an appropriation, street sales tax, the amount of sixteen thousand dollars for the final of this year's expenses for overlay, and we present that in the form of a motion.
Counsel, you heard the motion. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item five is approved.
Number six is a pass-through for, an appropriation pass-through for the Police Department in the amount of twenty-nine sixty-seven and twelve cents, and we present that in the form of a motion.
You heard the committee's motion. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item six is approved. I believe that's all I have. Looks like that cleans it up. Chairman Harris, personnel have anything? I don't think we have any.
No, no. I think we're gonna have a meeting, though.
Okay.
So, next month, we'll have something.
Very good. Item, that'll bring us to Old Business One. Consideration of an ordinance in public hearing for the vacation of east half of the twelve-foot alley, uh, lots four through nine on block nineteen.
Motion to suspend the rules and read this second time by title only with a short explanation.
Okay, just for the second reading, then?
Correct.
Can I amend this? Does it need a second first?
Uh, it needs a second first, I believe. All right, we got a motion, Mr. Westcott, and a second from Mr. Tripp.
And then, I'd like to make a motion to amend that for the second, final read.
I agree.
I'll second that. Or I'll just make that my motion, that's fine.
Does this withdraw everything and let me make that motion?
Yeah, cleaned up. Why don't you, why don't, why don't we do that? Would you withdraw your original motion?
Correct, I do.
Withdraw your second, well, the second story.
And I move to suspend the rules and read the second and third time by title only with a short explanation.
Second.
Very good. Motion and a second to suspend the rules, uh, waive the reading requirement for the second and third readings. So, we're voting on the motion to suspend. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, so, Mr. S- All right, so, Mr. Smith.
An ordinance vacate and abandon the east half of a 12-foot alley between lots four through nine, block 19, Madison White Addition to the city of Russellville, Pope County, Arkansas, for the purposes, this ordinance if passed would vacate the aforementioned property description and let it revert back to the adjacent property owners if passed.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
All right. Sounded like Mr. Westcott made a motion to adopt, and Mr. Wiley got in on the second. Any discussion? All in favor, say, well, we need to call the law on that.
Yes.
Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
Ms. Carruth?
Yes.
Mr. Harris? Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Straight?
Yes.
Mr. Sims?
Yes.
Mr. Tripp?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Where are we? Item three, this is discussion of the RDOT conversion and ordinance.
Number two.
Oh, two!
Yep.
I was thinking about doing them together, I apologize.
Is this the second reading for number two?
Yes. Uh, I thought so, because I thought those two were, were those two not cousins, related? Mr. Tripp's nodding his head.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it should be second reading on that.
I don't think it's...
On number two, motion to suspend the reading requirement and read this time only the short explanation.
For the what?
Let this be the final reading of number two.
Second.
I don't think it was for the first time last month.
Is that the...
That's, uh, number two.
We're clarifying here.
I didn't think it got on last month.
This one here?
I think this is the first time, because we didn't do a...
Public hearing.
...public hearing on it like we did the one before last month.
You may be right.
I think we need to do the public hearing, and I think this is the first.
Okay. Let's just make sure we do everything right. Mr. Westcott, we're not sure...
I think it's, I don't know if this is because it's either next to or adjacent to...
I think it's adjacent property.
And it's been the same petitioner as well, and I think that's why it's been hooked on, but I don't think we gave it a first.
I don't think it got a first reading, and I'm pretty sure we didn't do, I know we didn't do two public hearings last month, so you want to make a motion on...
What do you need tonight?
You want to get it done tonight?
Yeah, let's do it tonight.
Like suspend the reading requirements on all three readings?
I would. That's my motion.
Okay. Mr. Westcott makes a motion to suspend the reading requirements for all three readings, and did I see a second?
I second it.
Second, Mr. Wiley. All in favor of the motion to suspend, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Mr. Smith, would you read us an ordinance, please?
An ordinance to vacate a 50-foot right-of-way of South Utah Avenue from West Third Court to West Fourth Street between block 18, 19, Madison White Addition, the city of Russellville, Pope County, Arkansas. This ordinance if passed would vacate the aforementioned legal description of the city right-of-way and vacate it so that it would revert back to the adjacent property owners.
All right, so we need to declare a public hearing open. If anybody wants to comment on this, any concerns? There's Ms. Walker. I thought I saw your face earlier.
She hadn't been here.
You're available for questions and answers, but don't want to address, okay. Anybody else want to talk about this item? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Well, she did that.
Counsel, we got a motion to adopt from Mr. Wiley and a second from Mr. Westcott. Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Westcott?
Yes.
Mr. Tripp?
Yes.
Mr. Sims?
Yes.
Mr. Straight?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Carruth?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, that brings us to item three. This is the RDOT conversion, Whataburger, drainage, the whole partnership deal. We tabled last month, then we had a special meeting. We have not had a reading on, this is an ordinance and a resolution combined, isn't it, Tripp?
It's an ordinance that combines both of them.
Okay.
Both, two parts of it. An ordinance is needed to accept it per, I think it's 2765109 that I've got in the ordinance.
Okay. Any interest in pursuing this?
Pursuing it in which form? I'm interested in pursuing some flooding and drainage relief for, for the Ellis family at Whataburger. That's what I'm interested in.
Question, how we do it?
And I'm not interested in neither, or anybody that's called me, and there's been several, several, not just one, several, on the liability of the city to take over Skyline Drive without us knowing, you know, the true cost and stuff.
That's right.
That's eight miles, and I'm told that we could break, literally break our PW department I wish they weren't combined.
Mayor, how much money would it take to get this started?
To do what?
How much money would it take to get this started, so we can do this job?
Well, if we were, if we're going to do it the way, the way it's submitted, um, I'm going to guess probably a couple hundred thousand, maybe 300,000 for engineering. City pays for engineering, highway would pay for the construction, we pay for any utilities, if any, have to be moved.
So we could pay probably up to $2 million at most?
I, I don't know that, the way this came to be, we had three parties...
That's for moving all the utilities and everything. Wasn't that the numbers that was thrown out the other night? It would probably cost us $2 million to do this project.
That's right.
Yeah, that's right. I think $2 million minimum, but I, I don't think that was just for the drainage. I mean, are we going to widen their highway? And, and first, we can't do anything without the right-of-way or the easement or something. And so the way this got to where, to where it is, three parties came together, and each one of them, each one of them wanted something out of the deal and were willing to put something in the deal. As explained the night of the special called meeting, the Highway Department does not like maintaining what is basically a city street. Hilltop is more of a city street than it is a, a state highway. And so what they wanted, which is a policy of theirs all over the state, is to shed that type of inventory out of their maintenance list. That was what they wanted out of the deal. The university wants a new entrance into campus, and they're willing to give up all of the right-of-way at no charge, and even agree to the removal of some of their trees if necessary. And then the city wanted, our thing we wanted was to fix the flooding problem.
Kenneth, did you, you got any numbers on what it takes to maintain Skyline?
How much does it cost to... Mayor, didn't you get the same thing that I did, that if we don't do this and do it at a certain time limit, then we go back down to the bottom of the list?
There were...
Did you not get that from the conversation?
There wasn't a time...
I sure did.
There wasn't a time limit, but, but the sooner you get in, the sooner you, the sooner you can get approved.
My feeling was, if we don't do this and do this now, then we go back down to the bottom of the list, and we're going to wait a long time to get this done.
We've been pursuing this for 30 years.
I got the, you know, I got the feeling that they were fine, because they understand what an ordinance is and what state law says about reading them three times. You know, if the council wants some more time to deliberate on it and have more meetings on it, you could do the first reading, in which case, suspend the rules, read by title only. We don't do discussion until the third reading, and that would give us plenty of time to consider. But I think I understand what you're getting at, and basically, I know his little parable that he told that night didn't go over well with some members, but I...
They didn't go over well with him.
He cannot speak for the director, he cannot speak for the commission, and I think that was the best way he could come up with, to give you an example of what has happened to other cities in the past that rejected, uh, an agreement that they had their things they wanted. And that's, that's how great partnership works. Everybody puts in something, everybody gets out something, everybody was going to get what they wanted on this deal. But I think we've got a question for Mr. Kenneth over there.
Well, and Mr. Mayor, I don't think there's any consideration. We want Whataburger's drainage problem fixed, but the fact is, it certainly appears that the Highway Department and the Arkansas Tech University are getting a heck of a lot more than what the city is. Mr. Ellis, I mean no disrespect, but how much would it cost us to buy your property and relocate you? Just case in point. If we're going to spend $2 million and not get, and then also, and, and may or may not fix the drainage issue, because I've been told by engineers when we do the H Street project, that we may not have culverts big enough to handle it, then when you fast-forward to the fact that we're going to have to take this whole eight miles of highway in, which right now, I don't really care whether we take it in or not, but you see the point I'm trying to put, put out here. We, we're not getting as much as what they're getting out of this deal.
Mayor, may I interject and ask a question to Chief Sloan real fast? Kind of a corresponding point. Do you allow me to go there before Mr. Duvall answers?
Mr. Duvall, do you mind?
I don't mind at all.
Chief Sloan?
We don't run off.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but how much did it cost to repair the fire engine that went through that intersection a few years ago? Approximate, approximate number would be fine.
$65,000.
And what happened to that fire truck?
Well, it drove into that intersection and had water suck up into the inside of the building.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Mr. Duvall.
All right, Mr. Duvall, what, who had the question? Mr. Wiley?
Mr. Wiley. The only figures that I have was, was Ms. Harris had asked to get an estimate what I felt like it would cost to mow Marina and Skyline. I, I basically figured it where it would take a whole day to do Marina, a whole day to do Skyline, and I'm not, I'm not really sure till we do it if it'd take a whole day, but I just figured it on a day, and three employees with their salaries, and I figured, you know, how much, how much fuel I thought we would use, and I figured it for six mowings, which would be basically one a month, once a month, and I came up to $6,900.
Do you know how many miles of streets that we maintain now?
I'm not sure, Mayor.
A lot. Does anybody ever heard of it? I don't think I've ever asked.
On Mr. Duvall's six mowings currently, didn't he tell us they mow it two or three times a year? So this is, this is doing...
Sometimes.
I, I mean, this, this, I mean, I'm just basing on this, on six times, I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm not going to tell you will mow it six times. We may not, can.
But Mr., you're asking about RDOT.
Yeah, they mow it two to three times.
Their policy is two times.
So you're referencing potentially mowing it twice as much as what they've been mowing it.
Yes, we try, we try to go around the whole town once a month. It's usually about a month and a half turnaround. And, and of course, depends on weather as well, as you know, so...
They do a lot better job of saying highway.
Just seems to me like we're, we're kind of committed to the street maintenance business.
We are, yes.
We got an apartment, we just bought a new building, y'all got all kinds of cool equipment.
Yes.
Uh, we're going to be in the street maintenance business, and it seems to me like there's a lot of miles.
There, there's a lot.
If you add them all, every street in town, it seems like a lot of miles.
There's a lot.
But this eight miles, six miles of which was just overlaid to state highway standards.
Yes, sir.
He told us the other night that you could expect 20.
20 years.
And I think he was being conservative, because I mean, is that street out there not built for 70,000-pound trucks?
Yes, sir, it is.
And city streets usually get 6,000-pound trucks, like mine?
Yes.
Or lighter?
Or lighter, yes. Yes, sir.
And that's going to break your department to pick up that extra little bit of maintenance.
No, sir, I, I mean, if, if y'all decide to take it in, we'll, we'll take care of it. I mean, it's, and do I think it's going to break us? No.
How much time did you spend working on it yesterday while it was snowing on us? The snow plowing and saying...
Zero time.
Thanks.
Mayor, I'm going to make a motion, we spend a little, read by title only with a short explanation for the first time.
Thank you.
Second motion.
Second. All right, we got a motion and a second to suspend the rules and read it just for the first reading. It'll come back again, and we can have more discussion. All in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Mr. Smith?
An ordinance authorized the mayor and city clerk treasuries and all necessary documents to partner with Arkansas Tech University and the Arkansas State Highway Commission for improvements on State Highway 7 adjacent to Arkansas Tech University, accepting portions Highway 326, Section 1, between Highway 64 and Highway 7 into the street, city street system for the city of Russellville, Arkansas, from the Arkansas State Highway Commission and for other purposes.
All right. Mr. Duvall, if you don't mind, next month, I'd like to know how many miles of streets that you're maintaining right now.
I was just informed by the chief that he had asked her, when Kurt was in public work, 200 miles, around 200 miles, correct?
Thank you. All right, then. Excuse me. Item four, discussion of possible changes to the recently passed animal control law. Mr. Westcott, I believe you had, headed that up?
Yes, it's just a, a minor change. If you remember there on the, what we had done last month, Exhibit AA, uh, said any person, any person owning dogs, dot, 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 shall be confined, which means in essence, we had made it illegal for dog owners to roam free.
[laughing]
And we were asking whether they were vaccinated or unvaccinated dog owners. All this does is takes out the phrase "any person owning dogs" and replaces that with "animals," so that this ordinance, um, covers all animals and restricts them from being, um, put on a chain.
What do we, how do we need to handle that? Do we need a motion, or just...
Yeah.
Okay. So you're making a motion that we correct the language to reflect the intent.
Sure, sure. Motion to suspend the rule.
This is the second down there.
Mr. Wiley?
Yeah.
All in favor of cleaning up the, the language on that ordinance from last month, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item five, Mr. Tripp, you wanted to table?
Table to the, to the Personnel Committee, please, or, or refer to the Personnel Committee.
We have a motion to refer item five to the Personnel Committee.
Second.
And a second from Mr. Westcott. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?